Good morning. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Council President Barb Johnson. Before we begin our meeting this morning, we have one event to commemorate. We sometimes before our meetings have special people that we acknowledge, events in our city's history, employees that are retiring. But today, we get to begin celebrating the City Hall, our building here, our beautiful building's 125th anniversary. So Erin, why don't you come up and join me if you wouldn't mind? City Hall is a beautiful, remarkable place, a place, a workplace for all of us, but also a place that people visit in our city and remark about what a lovely, lovely building it is. It's a historic building, obviously, and when we look at the early photographs of our city, it's a remarkable transformation of the area around us, but this building has always been a landmark. And so in July, we'll be celebrating the 125th anniversary of the laying of the cornerstone. So we are going to today celebrate, we're going to pass a resolution that celebrates the 125th cornerstone anniversary. And it says, "Whereas City Hall County Courthouse," and of course, a lot of you know that it's still a building that we share with Hennepin County, and have a unique structure that manages the building. And Erin Delaney is the manager of the municipal building commission, which is this unique structure that runs this building. And we have representation from Hennepin County and Minneapolis, and we share the expenses for this building. I serve on the municipal building commission right now. Councilmember Goodman has served on the municipal building commission in the past. Thank you. And it's really, it's an honor to be able to help care for this treasure, so I've enjoyed my service on it. It says, "Whereas the City Hall County Courthouse was first made possible in the year 1887 by the state legislature with direction to erect a unique building with architectural symmetry to house the governments of both the city of Minneapolis and Hennepin County. And whereas the laying of the cornerstone on July 16, 1891, was attended by justices of the Minnesota Supreme Court, state officers, the Minneapolis City Council, the Board of County Commissioners, and other dignitaries. And whereas the cornerstone was neither the first stone laid nor the foundational stone, but it said symbolized the essential supporting role local government plays in residents' lives. And whereas the building has ably served both governments and become an anchor for downtown Minneapolis over the last century. And whereas the cornerstone has seen the building evolve as the community it serves has evolved. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the city of Minneapolis, that the cornerstone, the building it supports continues to be recognized as the epicenter of local government for the residents of Minneapolis and Hennepin County, and it may be a symbol for the Minnesota ideal of civic partnership and engagement for the next 125 years." So we will pass this today, Erin, and turn this over to you, and maybe tell people a little bit about what we're going to do in July.
Okay. Thank you, Council President Johnson. Council members, thank you for this resolution. Yes, it's exciting. It's 125 years since the laying of the cornerstone for the City Hall Courthouse building. And on Monday, July 11, we will celebrate with a civic ceremony. All members of the public are invited and encouraged to attend. The event starts at 11:30 and will be held in the rotunda of our building. And we will be starting with the city county choir will present songs from the era of 125 years ago. We'll be serving ice cream floats to remind everybody again of 125 years ago. And we have the current NBC board members will give brief remarks. We have Larry Mallett will also give some brief remarks about the architecture of this beautiful building. And we've invited all past NBC board members and have been pleasantly surprised that a lot of them are responding and will be attending the celebration. So we hope, we hope to see a lot of folks on Monday, July 11.
Thank you so much. Joined by my colleague, Councilmember Jacob Frye, who has an exciting opportunity to talk to us about for the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you, Madam President. We are in the process right now of recruiting the X-Games to come to Minneapolis for 2017 as well as 2018. They've been in Austin for the last several years. However, Minneapolis could be the perfect fit, I think, both for our city as well as for the X-Games. And I'd like to invite both Scott Romaine and Bill Deefup from Meet Minneapolis and Scott Romaine from Sports Minneapolis to, so we can present this resolution. This is a resolution supporting the city of Minneapolis to be selected as host for the '27 and 2018 Summer X-Games. Whereas the Summer X-Games is the premier action sports event where athletes compete to win bronze, silver, and gold medals along with prize money in BMX, skateboarding, and motocross events. And whereas it is not only the pinnacle event in action sports, the Summer X-Games is an annual youth festival where attitude, creativity, and style are expressed by thousands of competitors and attendees through sports, music, gaming, film, fashion, and art. And whereas the competition often features groundbreaking new tricks such as Tony Hawk's 900 in skateboarding, Travis Pastrana's double backflip in freestyle motocross, Jack Brown's Ollie 720 in skateboarding big air, Mitchie Brusco's Body Varial 900 in skateboarding big air, and Vince Byron's 540 double tail whip in BMX big air. And whereas in 1995, the first Extreme Games was held in Newport, Rhode Island, later rebranded as the Summer X-Games, and in 1996, has been hosted by San Diego, San Francisco, Philadelphia, and Los Angeles prior to taking place in Austin, Texas for the past three years. And whereas the city of Minneapolis offers a centrally located and transit-accessible facilities for both indoor and outdoor competition, concerts, and events, including US Bank Stadium, downtown East Commons Park, Target Field, Target Center, and TCF Bank Stadium, as well as clubs, venues, and art galleries throughout the city. And whereas Minneapolis is a young, vibrant, creative, beautiful city that welcomes the talents of all artists and athletes and is ready to showcase tougher tricks, higher heights, and individual achievement from all Summer X-Games participants. Now therefore be it resolved by the city, by the Minneapolis City Council that the city of Minneapolis supports being selected as host of the '27, 2017, and 2018 Summer X-Games in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And I will also add that in addition to the tremendous amount of tax revenue that this event generates, that the X-Games is also talking about putting up some sort of permanent facility for youth that will be a legacy for many, many years to come, whether it's be skateboard, skateboarding or otherwise. So this is a really exciting opportunity here and one that hopefully we can win out on. Do you have anything to say, Scott and Bill?
Thank you, Councilmember Frye, Council President Johnson, council members. Just wanted to thank the council for their support of this effort. We think it's a fantastic event to pursue, to welcome to Minneapolis. It really would help expose Minneapolis to the world in terms of it being a truly vibrant, active, and healthy community.
Well, this is an exciting opportunity for our city. And I noted that actually these X-Games, Councilmember Frye mentioned that it's for a young crowd. And I knew the name of only one person that's involved in the X-Games, so I think he's correct. But it is a beautiful, Minneapolis is a beautiful place to have an exciting summer adventure. We all love our summers. So we want to be competitive and make sure that we land these games.
Thank you.
I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Liddon.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum. Present Councilmember Johnson, Andrew Johnson, is on his honeymoon, so I guess we can excuse him. Hope he's having a great time. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, motion to approve the agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 21 items forward for approval this morning. Item one is a bond sale. Item two are three land sales. Items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 are all land sales. Item 14 is a change in our sidewalk food cart vendor location ordinance. 15 is a rental license dwelling refugation. 16 are the regular liquor business and gambling license applications. Item 17 is exclusive development rights for the commons on Penn Phase Two. Item 18 is a signature for our unified workforce plan. Item 17 are the workforce council appointments. Item 19. Item 20 is our Hopewell funding awards, and 21 is a travel donation acceptance. With that, I'll move items one through 21 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be really quick about this. I just, there's a lot to be excited about in Ward Five. Items five through 13 are land sales for the smart homes, and I'm hopeful that these homes will be really good for Ward Five. I ask for everyone's support on those, along with the sidewalk food cart vendor allocation ordinance. I think it's going to be great for places like North Minneapolis, especially on West Broadway. And, you know, I'm really excited about item number 17 as well, just kind of second phase of the common Z Penn project. And, you know, we see that the common Z Penn project that has been built already, I mean, you know, has added to the neighborhood, and I look forward to, you know, what's next. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Election and Rules Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. The Elections and Rules Committee has one item it's moving forward for today, which is the approval of election judges for the upcoming elections. I move approval of this item.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election and Rules Committee Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for approval today. The first is approving appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee of Conrad Mikowski for Ward Three and Laurel Nightingale, Ward Two. Second item is authorizing an annual no-cost agreement with Hennepin Healthcare System for onsite influenza immunization clinics for city employees. And the third item is authorizing a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Health for maternal infant and early childhood home visiting. And I will move all three items forward.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. First item is a grant acceptance with the US Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Second item is a contract with the Minnesota T-Wolves for Bomb Detection and Security Services at Target Center. Third item is a contract with Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The fourth item is a contract with Minnesota Crisis Intervention Team Officers Association for Police Mental Health Crisis Response Training. The fifth item is a grant acceptance from the Minneapolis Foundation for the EMS Pathways Academy. The sixth item is a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota to participate in a disparity study. And with that, I will move all six items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee is forwarding 13 items today. Item one is the pedestrian advisory committee appointments. Those appointments are listed. Item two is the bicycle advisory committee appointments. Those appointments are also listed. And there's an additional action that's approving the addition of a second seat for the bicycle advisory committee representing the Metropolitan Council. Item three is a Somali Independence Day large block event. Item four is the downtown Minneapolis transportation management organization dissolution affiliation. And that's just a technical rearrangement of how we relate to that group. We'll still participate with them. Item five and subsequent items refer to Reports, Ways, and Means Committee. Item 2016 is the alley renovation project program project approval for assessment. Item six is the contract with Hennepin Technical Ecology for test creation and scoring. Item seven is a contract with Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers. And it's approving a waiver of the city's request for proposal, policy, and procedures to move forward with that group. Item eight is a contract with Furpile Construction USA for water main construction. That's an amendment to an existing contract, and that is agreement to paid advertising with Municipal Parking Systems, and that's negotiation of Outfront Media LLC to provide that service. Item 10 is the 37th Avenue North Reasonable Solicitation Cooperative Agreement with the city of Columbia Heights. Item 11 is the contract with CDM Smith Incorporated for tunnel layout design. Item 12 is a bid for Stormwater Pump Station Rehabilitation Project, and that's accepting a low bid for the group listed. And then item 13 is a bid for self-propelled paint stripper, and that's also accepting a single, that's accepting a single bid, but we reviewed it and costs are consistent with other years. With that, Madam President, I will move all items except for item three, which I wish to call for further discussion.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report with the exception of item three, so I think I will vote on the committee report and then go back to item three.
Okay.
Any discussion on those items then between number one, two, and then five, excuse me, four through 13? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on those items.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to move to, to make a motion to suspend the council rules to allow a brief public comment regarding this matter.
Councilmember Reich has moved to suspend the council rules for a brief, brief public comment on item three. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Reich.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'll note that the council has had opportunity to review the record in this matter, including letters from Mr. T. and Mr. Speeder in committee. That has been thoroughly reviewed, but they make an appeal to present verbally as well, and perhaps they will be able to take opportunity to provide any new information that's not on the record and has not been reviewed by council. With that, I will allow each presenter five minutes if that suits, Madam President.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Robert Speeder. I'm an attorney representing the Carmel Mall, Ciberry Properties in Carmel Village, who objected to the Black Party, the Somali mall event this year. I'm an attorney downtown in 120 South Sixth Street, also live downtown now. So I must note, before I get into this much, while I much appreciate this unusual allowing us to speak here, we don't believe that this equates to a due process hearing where we have testimony of the various people from the neighborhood and the affected businesses. I do believe that there is a resolution we can reach here today that can avert the temporary restraining order that we are requesting, and it's now been removed to federal court, so you wouldn't think a Black Party would become a federal case, but it has. But before I get into what the resolution is, I do want to note briefly that the block event that's been proposed from Blaisdell to Pleasant certainly doesn't meet the ordinance requirement. The ordinance requires 75% approval of neighboring businesses and residences, and city staff has taken it upon themselves to exclude the approximately 40 residences that are on that three-block, from three-block stretch from the equation. So, and there is no precedent for that, and there's nothing in the ordinance that allows them to come, that termination. Nevertheless, even if we exclude the 40 residences, they still don't meet the 75 requirement. And the reason is, is because when city staff looked at it, they looked at the signatures, they failed to note that eight of those signatures were notify-only. In other words, there wasn't approval, they just notified. That doesn't get into the equation. And when you take out those eight, and you take out the two residences that they did include, because they got two residences in there, so they included two of 40, but not the other 38. So if you're not going to count residences, you shouldn't count any. And what's left was 68%. So they didn't get, even under the most generous way of looking at it, the 75% approval. Nevertheless, the reason that we're objecting to this, and the reason that it's become this big of a deal, is because it really shuts down the Carmel Mall to a large extent. The access to Carmel Mall is Pleasant Avenue. That's, any access from the south is from Pleasant Avenue. That's where the entrance is, that's where the parking ramps entrance is, that's where all the, you know, the, if you're going to park there, you're going to go there, that's where you come from. Pleasant Avenue on the south is going to be blocked in this event on a Saturday, a busy day, the first Saturday after Ramadan, and all day. And so cars, and if you think of the one-ways that are around there, everything's next to it is a one-way south. So if you're going to the east, the first north street from this event is First Avenue. And if you want to go back west to the mall, well, 28th Street's a one-way going east. So you'd have to go up to 27th Street and come back over and navigate down Pleasant, and as you get to Pleasant and 28th, there's going to be a barricade that says "Road Closed", "Local Traffic Only." Hopefully, maybe people figure out to go by, and if they do, they get to 29th, and at 29th is going to say "Detour." So maybe people will make it to the mall. In the last several years, it's been a disaster for all the businesses, the hundreds of businesses that are at the mall. And so what we are really asking, just open up Pleasant, make this a two-block event. It's not that the Carmel Mall don't support Black Parties for the Somali Independence Day, they absolutely do. In fact, our group brought, had the first three-block parties, and the first three-block parties were from Pleasant to, Pleasant to Blaisdell. This one is going to extend on the grand, which then effectively blocks this extra block. So it's a simple matter, we can make this solve for this year, we'll withdraw the objections and the TRO, we'll settle the case if we can keep, scale this down to a two-block event. So that's what I would ask the council to consider here. Hopefully, somebody can make that motion. And it doesn't mean that we think all the numbers are right. We would hope that next year, that staff would require that there should be one or two things happen. The ordinance should be amended to allow for the exclusion of apartment buildings, if that's the case, or they should be included into the calculations. But for this year, since we're only about eight days away from this event, we've just asked that it be a two-block event that's plenty big enough for the event, and then I think there can be peace among all. Mr. Tagg may have a few more comments, but again, thank you for allowing us to speak this morning. Were there any questions for me?
Thank you. I don't think so. Mr. Tagg.
One of my members of the council, my name is Randall Tagg. I represent various merchants at the Carmel Mall, and I would reiterate what Mr. Speeder said. My clients have no burning desire to conduct their own Somali Independence Day celebration, although they will if so approved. But what this issue, what this issue is about is blocking access, is using Somali Independence Day to block access and inflict economic damage on the long, on the largest Somali-American business operation within the state of Minnesota. And my clients would go away telling me to dismiss the lawsuit if Pleasant Avenue was opened up, but Pleasant Avenue was opened up and the mall is not effectively shut down by Somali Independence Day. To further add to what Mr. Speeder had to say about the 75% requirement, I would just add a few things. First of all, if this council is going to make apartment dwellers and renters second-class citizens by saying their votes don't count on a petition for a block event ordinance, it should do so directly and openly and not rely on a staff decision to do it. Secondly, even if you count all of those other things, my client submitted an application for, an application to conduct a separate, an independent Somali Independence Day celebration, which does not block off the mall, and as part of their petition, at least eight of the people who signed the Kajogue application, which is before you, said, "We are revoking our approval of that in favor of this alternative celebration that doesn't block off the mall." If you count the residences that were not approved and the people who revoked their approval by signing my client's petition, the Kajogue application, far from having 75% approval, has about 22% approval. And the council should not countenance what I believe to be a blatant violation of the ordinance, and that's the reason we're prepared to go to court to fight over it. But as Mr. Speeder said, if the, if the Somali Independence Day celebration is not being used to close off and damage the business of the largest Somali business center in the state of Minnesota, we'll withdraw the lawsuit and resolve this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Tagg. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move to approve this item as it came through committee and as stated on the agenda.
Councilmember Reich has moved item three, approving application for a large block event to be held July 9, 2016. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Upstain.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
But what this issue, what this issue is about is blocking access, is using Somali Independence Day to block access and inflict economic damage on the largest Somali-American business operation within the state of Minnesota. And my clients would go away telling me to dismiss the lawsuit if Pleasant Avenue was opened up. But Pleasant Avenue was opened up and the mall is not effectively shut down by Somali Independence Day. To further add to what Mr. Speeder had to say about the seventy-five percent requirement, I would just add a few things. First of all, if this council is going to make apartment dwellers and renters second-class citizens by saying their votes don't count on a petition for a block event ordinance, it should do so directly and openly and not rely on a staff decision to do it. Secondly, even if you count all of those other things, my clients submitted an application for, an application to conduct a separate, an independent Somali Independence Day celebration, which does not block off the mall. And as part of their petition, at least eight of the people who signed the Kajog application, which is before you, said, "We are revoking our approval of that in favor of this alternative celebration that doesn't block off the mall." If you count the residences that were not approved and the people who revoked their approval by signing my client's petition, the Kajog application far from having seventy-five percent approval has about twenty-two percent approval. And the council should not countenance what I believe to be a blatant violation of the ordinance. And that's the reason we're prepared to go to court to fight over it. But as Mr. Speeder said, if the Somali Independence Day celebration is not being used to close off and damage the business of the largest Somali business center in the state of Minnesota, we'll withdraw the lawsuit and resolve this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Tig. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move to approve this item as it came through committee and as stated on the agenda.
Councilmember Reich has moved item three, approving application for a large block event to be held July ninth, twenty sixteen. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Upstein.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano is absent. Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are ten ayes, one abstention and two absences.
That item is adopted. Next, we have on our agenda the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are twelve items on the Ways and Means Report this morning. The first three are legal settlements. Item number four and five are gift acceptance for city staff-related travel expenses. Item number six is the Target Center renovation project. This delegation of Contract Change Order Authority to the Target Center Project Manager and appointment of the Finance Officer to the Target Center Arena Design Group. Item number seven is the Contract for Criminal Background Investigation Services. Item eight is a contract amendment with Sue Plaster Consulting for EEO reporting and workforce planning. Nine is the Contract with Deloitte Touche, or excuse me, Deloitte Consulting LLP for benefit consulting services. Item number ten is authorization for issuance of general obligation tax increment and various purpose refunding bonds. Item number eleven is the Construction Contracts Change Management Policy. And the final item is the Strategic Real Estate Plan and issuance of RFPs for downtown campus. I'd like to move all twelve items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have six items from the Zoning and Planning Committee. I'm just going to pass out this updated resolution for item number five, as I begin here. So item number one is a Certificate of Appropriateness Appeal, granting in part appeal submitted by the property owner. And this would allow for partial demolition of this property and in addition. And that's at forty-four oh-one Lindell Avenue North. Item number two is the Local Historic Designation of the CA Smith Lumber Historic District. Item number three is approving an application for rezoning for Riverdale Ventures. This is to rezone from light industrial to a commercial activity center district to allow for three hundred seventy-four dwelling units to be constructed there. Item number four is a rezoning at seven-ten West Broadway to allow for a seven thousand five hundred square foot retail store. And item number five is the Local Historic Landmark Designation of the Snyder Mansion at twenty-one eighteen Blaisdell Avenue. For this, I will move the updated resolution that has been distributed. The intent is the same as the resolution passed that committee. This just clarifies some of the specific elements of the interior and exterior designation of this property. And item number six is approving the Como Blueprint, a small area plan for the Como Neighborhood, and amending the policy guidance of our comprehensive plan to reflect that small area plan. I will move items one through six.
Councilmember Bender has moved items one through six with item five being the entitled amendment by Bender, clarifying the areas to be designated. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That, those items are adopted. That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar. And the first is a motion by Councilmember Frye pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to general provisions, first reading and referral to Community Development Regulatory Services Committee authorizing electronic service of violation notices and orders. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. And number two is pursuant to notice, Councilmember Frye moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee, amending regulations for off-premise signs and billboards. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries.